Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the January two thousand twenty Metropolitan Planning Commission, Caddo Street Port Commission Board Meeting. We'd like to begin by welcoming you to participate in our opening ceremony. If we could get Ms. DiMartello to do the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Clark will please do the invocation. If you care to join us, please stand.
First of all, let us bow our heads in prayer. Dear God, as we pause in your presence today, we pray a special prayer for all of our service persons on land and abroad. Protect them with your loving mercy in whatever situations they may find themselves. We pray a special prayer and thank you for the opportunity to assemble in this forum today to discuss the business of Caddo Parish and the business of the city of Shreveport. Bless each and every one of us in a special way. Guide us from this place and give us your grace and mercy from this day forward. In your loving son, Jesus Christ's name, we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you, Ms. DiMartello.
My pleasure.
For the public hearing agenda today, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For further notification purposes, it is very important that you will fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at three one eight six seven three six four eight zero after one P.M. on tomorrow or by accessing our website at shreveportcaddompc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda item. All of the MPC board zoning recommendations are submitted to either the city council or the parish commission for a final decision depending on the location of the property in question. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. And as a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. Having said that, we welcome you today and we will call for an approval of minutes for the December fourth meeting. Motion by Mr. Collins, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor, please vote. Motion's carried. Thank you. We will now begin with case number ten dash three oh three dash S.P. Final Flat Minor. Ready and associates?
Travis Sturdivant with Rayland Associates, forty-nine thirteen Shed Road, Bossier City, seven eleven eleven. Here representing Mr. Collins on the resubdivision of a fifteen acre tract that he's got out of Highway one sixty-nine. Would be happy to answer any questions you may have concerning.
All right, Chair. Both members, what's your pleasure? Any questions?
Still giving to my thing.
I'm sorry. No questions. Hearing no questions, is there anyone else who care to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone else care to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing none, a call for discussion. If no discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. DiMartello, second by Mr. Curtis. Motion's carried. Thank you. We will now go to case number nineteen dash three one three dash C rezoning.
Good afternoon.
Jessica Harris. Bring it down. Okay, yeah, I'm short. I'm with T.E.G. Architects and I'm here representing Life Share Blood Center. My address is ten ten six Village Green Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. Trying to get my laptop to work here. Stay with me just a second. So, I mean, most of you probably know Life Share Blood Center. They collect bloods from donors, volunteer donors, and they process the blood and then distribute to the community for emergency use. And they also do research and other stuff related to blood. They're a nonprofit organization and their current location is at the corner of thirty-one thirty-two and Linwood. So, this request for the board is to consider rezoning of thirty of their properties. Twenty-eight of them are right now residential R-one-seven and two of them are commercial C-three. And they would like to rezone it into O.R., which is Office Research, which their current building is already O.R. Here's the existing site. This is their building, two stories, and they have like two parking lots in front along Linwood. This is the Linwood. And here along here's this thirty-one thirty-two. So, we just want to share what, you know, potentially in the future, what it might look. They would like to add in the future a warehouse in the back in here and a bus barn and potentially a cellular research building so they can grow and expand. And as you can tell from the rendering, most of them will be one-story. And so, there shouldn't be any, you know, concern with height. And we also, I mean, they're not, since most of the function will be offices and research, shouldn't be problem with odor or noise. And they do have intent to have a landscape buffer along where current residents are. And I think they believe by, you know, adding to their facility, it will create more jobs and also they conserve the community better. I guess that's all I have. If any of my team member want to add anything?
That would be my job, sweetheart.
Sorry.
Is there anyone else who care to speak in favor of this process? You'll yield the mic. Give us your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Norbert Krabs and I'm with Life Share Blood Centers. I'm the executive director of procurement and property management. And what I wanted to point out on the drawing, let's see if I can get this to work. Which button? Okay. The, this area in here is new parking. And what's important about that, we have, she showed you two parking lots, one here and one there. When this one is full of employees, donors drive by and they say, "I'm not going to stop there. It's gonna, I'm gonna wait forever to donate." And let me tell you, it's usually four or five people and they're donating at the most, unless it's a good drive. So, when we open this up here and turn it into employee parking, you know, hopefully the donors, when they drive by, they'll see an empty parking lot and pull in. Also, all our traffic goes in that main entrance there, goes both directions. And it's, it's not a very safe condition. So, when we, when we finally get this street closed, it's going to be a one-way street. It's going to go this way. Our buses and our vehicles will go this direction, not back and forths. Because we have employees parking here and they're coming across the traffic, big trucks, eighteen-wheelers, buses. So, you know, it's really going to lend itself to two advantages, safety for sure, and then maybe get some more donations out of it. So, that's all I had to add. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Krabs? All right, hearing none. Anyone else present that would like to speak in favor of this project?
I'll raise it up a little bit. I'm Desi Sprals, Fortin de Blata, nine twenty Piermont Road, Suite five twenty, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh six. The only one comment I have is at the public hearing last month, there was a resident who raised a concern about drainage and about the amount of water that would be coming off of this site after all of the additional parking lots and buildings have been added. I just wanted to clarify, the city of Shreveport does have a stormwater detention ordinance that requires us to restrict the amount of water that can flow off of a site when it's developed. The one interesting thing that the city engineer does is he doesn't even allow me to consider the amount of water that ran off back when it was fully developed with residential houses. He makes me back up as if it was a totally undeveloped site and that's the amount of water that we're restricted to on discharge. So, as far as the resident's concern about drainage and additional water into their subdivision, there will actually be less water going into their subdivision after this is developed than what went into the subdivision when that was fully developed as houses. Now, answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sprals.
Good afternoon. I am L. Havered Scott the Third, ten forty-nine Southfield Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh six. I'm the attorney for Life Share Blood Center. I just wanted to point out, when we were here in December regarding the street closure, which is really a separate issue from this, but at that time, there were some neighbors that showed up that opposed it and Councilman James Green was with those neighbors. We spoke to Councilman Green after the hearing in the lobby and I asked him if he would meet with Life Share's CEO to help resolve any issues that the neighborhood might have. Chad Douglas, Life Share's CEO, tried on multiple occasions, multiple emails, which I have copies of, and telephone calls to reach Councilman Green and never received a return phone call. So, if there are any issues with the neighborhood, we've tried to resolve them and I don't know of any, but I do know that this project predated my time as Life Share's attorney. There have been a number of trips that Life Share has made before this body, I think since two thousand twelve, if you read the staff report. There were continuing conditions that the city kept asking Life Share to meet to get this project approved and Life Share has done, to my knowledge, has done everything that the city has asked Life Share to do. I think one of the big issues that MPC had on previous occasions was the buffer zone. And if you can see from the drawings, there's a significant buffer zone both on the north and on the west side, which would be the top, and on the left side of the photograph. So, I think that Life Share has tried to comply with that. I think that any development that I see proposed is going to be significantly better than the current situation with the property. I don't know if y'all still take a trip out to see properties before the hearings, but if you made a trip out to see this, Life Share's dealing with a considerable problem that they've got with people staging parties and get-togethers back on these old abandoned streets and it's kind of a mess right now. And I think this will be a significant improvement. I'll point out, Life Share has five or six locations in the state of Louisiana, two in Texas, and at least one in Arkansas. Their headquarters are here in Shreveport. This is an area that is, I think anybody could say is in a little bit of a decline. I think having Life Share there is an improvement to the community and will help with having positive aspects and positive influence on the location. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to make a comment. I appreciate you all for trying to reach the residents in that area. And when you said that you did not get an answer back from any of them, thank you for reaching out to the neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am. Life Share wants-
Because I did take a look at that site.
They want to be a good neighbor.
Yes.
And they're trying to be a good neighbor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else care to speak in favor? Or the persons present who care to speak in opposition? Anyone present who would care to speak in opposition? And I'll call for-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before you call for the vote, just need to stress the fact that today, even though there have been renderings and site plans presented, the staff has not had an opportunity to review those site, that site plan and ensure that it's in compliance with the regulations. But the only object that you're, before you today is the actual rezoning of the property, just for the record.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Would anyone care to make the motion as stated in staff recommendations? Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Collins, a second by Ms. Smith. We'll call for the vote. Motion's carried. Thank you very much. We now call for case number nineteen dash four five three dash C, special use permit and site plan, Strange Brew.
How's it, everybody?
Fine, sir. How are you?
My name's Joseph Trey Carter, six-two oh-two, Kathy Lane, Shreveport. And I'm here to see about adding a patio in which we can go non-smoking on the inside and so people will have liquor on this patio.
All right, both members, any comments or questions for this gentleman? All right, hearing none. Do we have any other persons who wish to speak in favor of this request? Yes, sir. You'll be so kind as to remove your hat.
Oh, yes, sir. Sorry about that.
Thank you so much.
Apologize. Chase Boydham, six-four-six Linden, seven eleven oh four. I'm here just in support. I own Fatty Arbuckles in downtown. I was the former owner of Bears and I went through the similar process and I, I'm a huge advocate of non-smoking. I hate cigarette smoke, yet I'm a bar owner. And so, I really like the move he's making and just wanted to come and support him. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good to see you.
Anyone else care to speak in favor? Yes, sir?
Hello, my name's Colton Johnson. I live at one seventy-two Carrollton Avenue, Shreveport, seven eleven oh five. I'm the owner of Bears on Fairfield and we have a non-smoking policy throughout the entire place. We have a patio that our guests smoke on and I think it would be great for him to have one as well and I'm just here to support him.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else care to speak in favor of this request? Or the persons present who would care to speak in opposition? Is there any opposition to this request? Hearing none, we call for discussion. Then we'll call for the vote. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Curtis, second by Ms. Cooper. We'll call for the vote, please. Motion's carried. Thank you very much. We'll call for case number nineteen dash four five eight dash C, special use permit and site plan, Sean Gilbo.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm the property owner. I had bought this house under the impression through the MLS that this was zoned to be a multifamily property. We started trying to do rehab on the property and-
Do us a favor and start with your name and address.
Apologies. Sorry, I'm nervous. Sean Gilbo, thirty-six forty Greenway Place, Shreveport.
Thank you, sir. All right, you may proceed.
So, when we had started trying to rehab on the apartment attached to the property, we found we weren't zoned correctly. So, we're trying to make things right. We're not trying to change how the property is used. It's been an apartment for twenty years. Unfortunately, it hasn't been legally zoned for it. We're just trying to update the interior, not change the exterior. We're trying to improve the neighborhood. We're also trying to add some additional parking off-street because there's a tremendous amount of cars that park on-street would make it difficult to navigate. So, we're hoping to make it easier to drive up and down the street with that. And I also have a letter from one of the neighbors unsolicited that approves of it, if that helps. I think that's it, just trying to get this zone correctly so we can improve the property. Any questions I can answer for you?
Both members, any questions for Mr. Gilbo?
Are you aware?
I'm sorry.
Please go right ahead. How you doing this afternoon?
Good, you?
Okay. Are you aware of the staff recommendations regarding stipulations?
As far as, I worked with Jake Pallett. It seemed like they were in favor of it. They didn't seem to find any fault with it and I worked extensively with them to make sure we did this correctly, being this my first time going through the process.
Mr. Curtis, would you read those aloud?
Yeah. And you are correct, the staff does recommend approval. And it says that they recommend approval for this special use permit request with the stipulation that the applicant receive approval for variance to setback requirements for an accessory dwelling unit as described in section six point one M of the UDC. The accessory dwelling unit shall be maintained in substantial accord with the approved site plan. So, were you made aware of that stipulation?
Yes, we have a meeting next on the fifteenth to look at the variance to see if that will pass.
And that issue doesn't cause you any heartburn?
Uh, it's just-
Or none that you can't tolerate?
Well, I mean, it's just part of the process, so I'm learning how this works.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, you're at the right place.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Gilbo? All right, sir. Is there anyone else who care to speak in favor of this project? Anyone else who care to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to his request? Anyone care to speak in opposition to his request? Hearing none?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the stipulation.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Curtis and second from Ms. Smith. We'll call for the vote. All right, motion's approved. Thank you, sir. Then we'll go to case number nineteen dash four six seven dash C, zoning request, WB
Alex Bennett, forty-four forty-one West Airport Freeway, Suite three thirty, Irving, Texas, seven five oh sixteen. Excuse me. We are proposing to rezone six acres of the end of Fern Circle located behind the Fairfield Market to construct a forty-bed inpatient rehab hospital. The facility is physical rehab, it's not chemical or mental rehab. It's essentially the facility will be a step from the hospital to patients going home. So, a common example is someone who has a stroke. They're well enough to be discharged from a hospital, but not well enough yet to go home and be functioning. So, they stay at our facility for approximately two weeks with physical and occupational speech therapy on a daily basis. And then they, through that treatment, they're then discharged to their home typically. The project itself will probably bring around seventy-five to a hundred full-time positions. So, with that, I, with that, I, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Would you care to repeat that statement relative to physicians, please?
Uh, the, the project, the project, once it's completed, will bring about seventy-five new jobs to the community.
Okay. All right. You said, you said-
Positions. Positions, not positions. Sorry. No. No, it's-
You're from Texas.
No, sorry. The breakdown is about, it's, a lot of it is licensed folks. A third of the staff is occupational and speech and physical therapists. A third is nursing and then the other third is administrative ranging from the CEO down to the facility maintenance staff.
I encourage you to hire from this area.
Yeah, we will. We will.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, any questions for this gentleman, Mr. Bennett? At this time? All right, is there anyone else present, Mr. Bennett, that would care to speak in favor of your request?
Good afternoon. My name is Joanne Willis, three thirty-three Texas, Suite ten fifty, Shreveport, seven eleven oh one. I am the real estate broker representing the seller of this tract of land for the proposed development and just wanted to let you know, when we first began working with Alex and his partners, we met with the mayor and that was early in two thousand nineteen to get his feedback on our proposed project at this location. He was very in favor of it. He spoke very highly of our idea for development of this tract. And then in later on, as we moved into the transaction further, we met with John Nicholson, city councilman for District C, and Grayson Butcher, city councilman from District D, as well as George Beeson, who's the president of the Piermont Place Neighborhood Association so that we could explain the project to them before our public hearing in an attempt to answer any questions that they might have or any concerns that they might have about our project. They were very favorably impressed and supportive of our project. Just wanted to let you know- Just wanted to let you know that we've been very diligent in presenting, making sure that we're transparent with our endeavor and address any concerns that the public may have about our project. So I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Ms. Willis. Any questions for Ms. Willis? Yes, sir, Mr. Carvin.
Ms. Willis, I've heard, I almost say the B-word, I heard one's building in Boja also, is this the same developer?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, got you. And any connections, I know you sit from Texas, is the owner of this being withheld right now or is the name public? The developer, the owner of the project?
We are the developer and the owner.
Okay, got you.
Yeah.
What's your full name, I'm sorry?
WB Development Partners.
WB, thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions for Mr. Bennett? If there are no further questions, anyone else care to speak in favor? Mr. Bennett, before you leave the mic, one request.
Yes, sir.
When you break ground and cut the ribbon and all, would you invite us to come to the opening?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request?
Well, you have it in favor.
I'm sorry?
You have some more in favor coming in.
Oh, please, come here.
Are you in favor? Oh, opposition, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone else care to speak in favor? If not, we're ready for opposition. Please come forward.
Hello, Matthew Lynn, six twenty-seven Rutherford. I witnessed a vote by the majority of the Board of Piermont Place that voted in opposition of this happening. I have several of the members here, several that were on the telephone conference call. And part of the, the problem of this particular development actually stems with, with city drainage. The current drainage for sewage for that property goes underneath Piermont Place, and Piermont Place, just the neighborhood, is teetering on it being too much, and they ruled that it was just enough to handle it, that anything else added to that sewer line would exasperate it. Along with the fact that surface drainage of stormwater between this property development and Symphony Lane, which the ingress and egress is on Piermont, it also is flooding some of the homeowners on Symphony Lane. It's not flooding the homeowners from Piermont Place, but it does flood the homeowners on Symphony Lane, and so more concrete in that area would exasperate it. You're working with homes in Piermont Place that are going to average about a half a million apiece, for which they're all paying property tax, and overhead lighting, dumpster control. And when we talk about dumpster control, everybody puts in stipulations that you can only dump from nine AM to five PM. I'm working right now with Piermont Place on Mitchell Lane, and they have that same stipulation from this body. And their contract with their agency that dumps their trash says they can only dump from nine to five. But the company that dumps their trash refuses to abide by those orders and dumps at four AM every single day. And so you hear the crash of the dumpster. And then you hear the beep, 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 beep of the dumpster as well. And that's heard for a couple of blocks away. And on Dillingham, there's homes that at one point appraised for about three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand. The last house that sold was a few weeks ago, and it sold for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And several of the people that I know on the block are going to the tax assessor and having their taxes reassessed based on that, based on the houses not selling. So this is an opportunity to maintain the strength and the fortitude of a neighborhood that is paying high taxes, that was not anticipating the, the light littering, the light pollution that's going to come from a facility like this. It's not going to anticipate the crashing of a dumpster in the middle of the night. And I realize you can stipulate that they don't have it, but just note that people don't abide by those rules. There's no teeth in them, because once you give the person the opportunity to open their business, they open their business and nobody wants to shut them down. However, a company out of Irving, Texas, they can locate anywhere in Shreveport or Caddo Pairs that they want. They can pick another neighborhood to operate in that's not so invasive to Piermont Place, which is a gated subdivision, and they pay a ridiculously high amount of taxes. And so I view it as not just bad for the neighbors, but also bad for the city, because then you have people, again, escaping the inner part of the city, moving further south outside the city limits and diminishing the tax base that we have with property that's already in existence. I think that that area is a, is a lower impact, just general body than, than what a rehab facility has to offer. I'm happy to take any questions y'all have.
Any questions for Ms. Julian? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Matthew, I'm just curious, if we leave it, if it was to be left C1, what do you think the differences would be there if a development went in there similar to the one that backs up to Piermont Place right now?
Well, anybody that's housing this amount of beds and open twenty-four seven, and so this is, this is a step-down unit. You know, you leave the hospital, you step down into something like this. It's still twenty-four hours a day. It's still people going outside to go smoke their cigarettes, to throw, to empty trash into the dumpster. They're still doing that twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. On, I'm just referring to the other one that's right off of Dillingham and Mitchell. Every night, they're, they're coming and going from work, they're emptying the trashcans. You can hear them outside smoking cigarettes and, you know, shooting the bull, which, I mean, that's, that's the nature of the beast. And the nature of the beast does not allow it to be conducive to a neighborhood that the neighbors are going to want to stay in and that the city's going to want to keep charging half a million dollars property assessments.
Any other questions?
And I'm here, again, I'm here with the vote of the Board of Directors, the majority of the Board of Directors of Piermont Place, right there.
Any more questions for Mr. Lynn? Mr. Lynn, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else care to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone care to speak in opposition? Mr. Bennett, you have the privilege of coming back for a vote.
I can't speak definitively about the sewer issue because we haven't yet filed our civil plans, but obviously we will be in compliance with whatever regulations a city engineer comes up with. As far as drainage, the entire subdivision runs through the detention pond that is just north of our site. So we have heavy stipulations that we cannot do any surface drainage into the bayou, which adjoins our property to the east. So the, the detention pond itself was just cleaned out about a year and a half ago. The entire infrastructure for the entire business park was, was designed by the same civil engineer we're using, Moren Associates. So we're, they're highly familiar with the site. They've improved the area as far as the drainage goes. You know, as far as light pollution, the city has fairly stringent requirements as far as bleeding, you know, overhead lights bleeding onto adjacent properties. The, the site itself is kind of tucked, tucked away a bit as, as Piermont Place is buffered by the detention pond as well as the green space located on the site right here. So we've got this and this before we get to Piermont Place. So our dumpster enclosure is located against the bayou to, to try to mitigate any sort of disturbance to the neighborhood. We intend to be good neighbors and don't, and don't want to be a nuisance to anyone, so.
All right, Mr. Bennett, any questions for board members?
A comment, you've done one.
Mr. Carvin.
Thank you, sir. You've done one of these in Texas, right?
No, we have one under construction in, outside Indianapolis right now.
But, but what Desi said on a different case, he's got to comply with the city of Shreveport, drainage and sewage, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. And the, and the other part of it is, if you have a dumpster that comes in four in the morning, I'm sure your patients don't want to be.
Yeah, I can, I can assure you, our, our average patient age is sixty-five years old. They're not going to want to, they don't want to hear the dumpsters anymore than anybody else does.
So you could probably handle that, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Curtis.
As you're probably aware, prior to new development, we conduct pre-application conferences. And these are headed by Mr. Jean. I'd just like if you would allow for him to use some comments, therefore, as a result of that pre-application conference.
Mr. Jean?
Yes, we did, we did hold a, a pre-application conference on this, this development. The client was represented by very capable engineering staff that were very familiar with all the issues. We were able to apprise them of all the challenges with the site as it relates to stormwater. They took a lot of very extensive notes. We, we were able to send all of our notes out the following day. Included in those notes were issues as it relates to stormwater and what the requirements were, the engineering staff that actually reviewed those plans, discussed those challenges with, with them, and they completely understood what those were. One of the things that happens is we don't get into all the, the stormwater calculations, and that's what he mentioned earlier. All that happens really at the permitting phase. They, they did receive an invitation from the engineering department to submit those in advance of the, of the permit set so that they could be reviewed, so they wouldn't, would not delay the processing of the case. And they were, like I said, they were, they were, all the issues were very fleshed out during that. All the requirements that we have within our UDC were also brought forward. We, we discussed fire prevention issues and pretty much went through this with a fine-tooth comb, and they were very attentive. And we, we expect we're going to get a site plan in the near future that will comply with all those requirements.
Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Cooper?
I just had a question for staff. I'm looking at the zoning map, a couple of pages on top of that. And I'm looking at the C1 space to the north, which in the staff report is described, is that where the detention?
Yes, it is.
So that, how big is that? I mean, that's, that basically is going to serve as a buffer, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And how?
It's about sixty to eighty feet across. We purposely, we're actually taking title to that as well, as part of our purchase. So we'll, we'll be responsible for the maintenance of the detention pond as well. But we purposely did not rezone that to keep it at a lower zoning so that in the future there was no concern with us making it a more obtrusive zoning category adjacent to the residential area.
Okay. Okay, good, yeah, that's, the C1 north is white space is what I'm referring to. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Board members, any other questions for Mr. Bennett? Hearing none, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Any comments, board members, product of voting? If not, we call for the vote. All those in favor, please vote yes.
You need a motion.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the following steps.
Motion by Mr. Carvin, second by Ms. Cooper. Call for the vote. Thank you.
Do you know what? It's personally you. Got a lot on your mind, I don't know how to do this today.
Motion passes, thank you. All right. We will now go to case number nineteen dash four two five C zoning request, Mr. Orlanda Case number nineteen dash four two five dash C zoning request.
It appears, Mr. Chairman, that Mr. Sanders is not present.
Yes, sir.
This application was remanded back to you from the city council for you to take action with a recommendation. We would ask that you would, in light of the fact that Mr. Sanders is not here, still forward this back to the city council with a decision.
All right. Any comments?
A question. So what is the request? It's just not listed on the agenda.
Basically, they had, as I shared with you earlier, they had remanded this back for you to review again. And one of the suggestions was the CUV zoning designation, but you are perfectly at liberty to, to recommend any zoning that you feel is appropriate.
So the request is this change to what, from what to what?
The request is changed from the residential zoning class to C3.
That's the applicant's request?
That's the applicant's request.
And the city council remanded that request back?
With that request, with instructions or suggestions to the urban village zoning designation.
Mr. Chairman?
Can you?
What did you say? Okay, go ahead.
But we can send it back and say our initial vote on it stands, right?
You can do that also.
Yes.
Okay.
Did I hear another voice? Ms. Smith?
No.
All right, Ms. DeMarco?
Yeah, I think it's, it might be a little helpful is to show us the difference between the urban village and the C3. And because as I understand it, there's not much difference.
And you should have that in front of you.
Okay.
On the screen as part of the case. But I'll see if Ben can.
It starts.
She does not appear to have that information available.
I just wanted it on record.
Is it part of the case?
It is part of the case.
No, it isn't.
Yeah, it is, it's in your packet.
It's about halfway down when you start.
It's like teal and yellow.
Scrolling down.
Make a motion to send it back to the council.
Well, hold on, we're not, we're not done with discussion.
Okay. We're not done with our public either.
Can you pull it up, Marquise?
Yeah. Yeah. Stephen, will you mind just reviewing that with us real quickly?
Not at all, ma'am. Actually, this is a comparison between the C3 commercial corridor district and the, the commercial urban village district. As you will see in these first few pages, this just demonstrates how many things are in common as it relates to the permitted uses in that district. And so you just scroll down with stop right, go back up just a little bit, please, go on up. Okay, as you will see, the vehicle dealership enclosed, that, that, that is exactly the same permissions as you would have in a C3. And what we understand is that is exactly what he wants to accomplish. As you scroll on down, you'll also find, when you look down, keep going, you'll find one, keep going. You'll find here with the special use permit, the vehicle dealership with outdoor display is identical as well. They both require special use permits. So either one of those districts would, would get Mr. Sanders, if you gave him what he originally requested, he would still end up with the same thing. There are some nuances in, in the village district where there are some more mixed uses that are allowed in that district, such as residential is allowed as a mixed use, and that's the kind of the major differences. But from, from the standpoint of what he's requesting to do, there are no, no differences.
So the, the things that are special or that are different are just additional, like you could put residential, those kind of things.
You can, you can put residential permitted by right. And then if you, if you look here, you'll see, as you look in the CUV, the townhouse, the single-family detached, the single-family detached, and the two-dwelling, two-family dwelling is allowed by right in that district. So it does kind of more talk about something that's more mixed use, gives it an opportunity for more vibrancy in that particular district.
Not a bad thing. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
And just in addition to that, if you would allow me, that is more in line with what we hope that particular area of Fairfield will market to, will develop into on both sides. As you well know, at one time, it was heavily residential, and it's hopeful that it will one day again, to some degree, have that mixed-use character in it. And that was why the desire was to rezone it to the CUV instead of the C3.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments? Yes, sir.
Just another question for staff. If, if we were to recommend CUV, the applicant would then have the same right under CUV as he would under.
For the, for the vehicle dealership, whether it's enclosed or it's not, those rights are exactly the same.
And CUV may even expand some of his uses outside of C3 then?
Well, the CUV would allow more options in various ways. Now, there are different design and bulk and area requirements and design standards as it relates to CUV because it's intended to be much more a pedestrian, human-scale environment. So there is a little bit of difference in that, but from the standpoint of just uses themselves, he could obtain the uses that he is desiring to have in that district. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir, Mr. Carvin.
I don't remember the date of this meeting, but didn't we have a long conversation about this at that first meeting when we came up with this decision?
We did have a quite extensive conversation.
Exactly. From that time to this time, nothing's changed, it's just been remanded, all right?
It's been remanded with instructions from the city council. We've met with Mr. Sanders and gone through all the information that you have available before you today, and shared that with him, that he could do what he's requesting to do with the CUV zoning. Why he's not here today is a mystery, but he has the, he was explained that he could do what he needed to do.
All right.
I know, but we sent it to the city council. I guess we didn't approve it, right? That's why we sent it to the city council.
City council, he was, he went before the city council, and the city council remanded it back to you to reconsider.
We're not satisfied with our recommendation.
But again, the city council is a governing body, they can overturn it, and they can approve it if they want to.
They wanted it to be further studied by you and make a recommendation after you further studied the application. If it's the same, they're, they're perfectly okay with that. If you have a different recommendation, that would be acceptable also.
I don't see anything has changed. I say remanded back, I make a motion to remanded back.
No, 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 no.
You can't remanded back to them, you got to make a recommendation to hear.
I got some people here.
Oh, I thought you'd already had everybody for and against, I'm sorry. Okay.
All right. Let's do this at this particular point. Board members? In that the applicant's not present, I feel sure that there are some citizens here who would like to voice their opinion in opposition, and at this time, we'll open the mic for them to do that. The first are in favor. If anyone's here that's in favor of this request, please come forward. Is there anyone here in favor of that request? Please come forward. All right? Is there anyone present who is in opposition to this particular request? It is your opportunity to come to the mic. The first spokesperson has ten minutes, and the following individuals have three. Anyone here to speak in opposition? All right, at this point in time, we'll call for discussion. Board members?
I have a recommendation or whatever, or a motion.
What's your question?
I, I motion, if I say this right, to recommend a change in zoning to the CUV.
A second?
We have a motion with Ms. DiMartello, and a second with Ms. Cooper. Do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please vote yes. All right, the motion carries, thank you very much. Now I call for case number nineteen dash three-zero-six annexation.
Hi, I'm Michael Woods. I'm, what am I supposed to do?
Name and address.
Okay. Six-nine-seven South Azure Drive in Camp Verde, Arizona, eight-six-three-two-two.
Welcome, sir.
All right.
Would you care to tell us why you're here?
I'm here, I have a hundred and twenty-two acres in the, it's called the Cooper Road area, at the end of David Rains. And I'm attempting to get the city's annexation so that I can have a number of developers who are interested in doing some development. I've owned this land for over fifteen years, and that area hasn't changed much since then. And I have, I believe that there is a lot of possibilities for that area, to revitalize it, to bring it, make it something that the people of that area would be proud of. We are looking at bringing in, developing the whole hundred and twenty-two acres over time, of course. We'd like to bring in some apartment complexes, we'd like to bring in some single-family residences that are in affordable range for individuals in that area. We'd like to bring in retail, we'd like to bring in restaurants, we'd like to bring in coffee shops, we'd like to bring in, to bring amenities to that community that just aren't there and that's in, you know, just about every other community in the Shreveport The, we also have, I have an investor that is, would like to, out of Houston, that would like to bring a memory care to that area. I have a number of developers who have come to me and are interested in partnering up in, in doing some, some really wonderful things for the area. But the fact that it has no city services because of not being inside the city area has basically put kind of a stall on their interest because of their concern about whether it could be annexed or not. So I think that the Cooper Road really could use the, what we're bringing to it, it's also going to bring a ton of jobs to the area with the retails that we're looking at. Even had a, a major supermarket that has a small market model that they use that was interested in coming to that area, but, but the annexation, annexation put them on hold. So by getting the MPC's approval to move forward to the city council to get this annexed to the city, puts me in a position to really do a lot of development in the area.
All right, sir. Any comments or questions for Mr. Wood? Yes, ma'am, Ms. DiMartello, please.
So you want to annex, this is in the parish, as I understand it, you want to, you're here to annex it into the city?
Correct.
And is, I mean, you're building in the parish, you could add water and sewage and all that, is it just due to cost, being annexed into the city, or what's, what's the, why do you want to be annexed into the city?
Well, actually, in two thousand and seven, I was, I got MPC approval to go forward with some development in the area, and we were told we had to bring in, you know, the sewer and the water that's necessary. But for a major developer to come in and spend the kind of money that is going to be spent, we're talking, of course, millions of dollars, they want to make sure that those city services are available to them.
Okay, so, okay. And I commend you for wanting to develop, and I'm not saying anything about that, I'm just curious.
Mm-hmm.
So it would prevent you from developing in the area if you couldn't get annexed?
It would prevent me from getting the financing that's needed. I'm kind of out of a capital hold because of the fact that, in the, again, the money that we're talking about investing and not knowing, well, actually, I was told it has to be annexed to the city anyways at some point. So what we're trying to do is get that started so that, then that puts me in a position to move forward with the developments that we have in mind.
All right. Board members, any further questions for Mr. Wood? All right, hearing none, is there anyone else present that would care to speak in favor of this application? Thank you, Mr. Wood. Yes, sir.
Also, I had some renderings that we were going to, okay, would you like to see that, what we're kind of having in mind for the area, or?
Please go ahead.
Oh, okay. This is a, okay, this is the resident, sorry, the retail area that we're looking at, that we'd like to bring in. Again, bringing in where some small businesses could come into the area, I mean, you know, dry cleaner, shoe repair, subway-type restaurant, again, coffee shop, there's a university, Southern University's right there, and there is even a coffee shop.
Ben, could you zoom me in closer so that the board could get a better look at what's represented? Thank you.
You know, bringing in a coffee, I'm not a big coffee drinker, but I have some friends who have to make their Starbucks stop daily. But in that area, you have a university, and there's not a coffee shop for the students to go to. I think, so that's one that's showing the retail, we'd like to have an open look to it. And we're potentially thinking of maybe on the second, and maybe even going up a third level and making that residential, so making this a mixed-use area with some apartments above and maybe even some, some fifty-five and older apartments. Then also, we go to this one. And this is kind of the plan for the entire area. This area here is David Rains, and we're looking at having retail on this portion here. And then behind it, this, we're looking for single-family residences. We think we can get about two hundred single-family residences in there. We would make that a gated community. And I think that by, because I have met a number of people from that area who grew up in that area, and, but now they don't live in that area because they don't have the product that would allow them to want to be there. Their parents are there, grandparents for their kids, but they, they can't live in the area. So a lot of individuals, from what I understand, is when they, you know, go through college, get educated, get a nice job, they move out of the area just because it doesn't have the housing that they would like, or the amenities that they would like. And I think this would be a big boom for the area. Okay, that's it.
Any questions? Anyone else present who could speak in favor of this request? Speak in favor of this request. Anyone present who could speak in opposition to this request? The first person gets ten minutes and...
Okay, no, I'm not the first person.
And the second, anyone after that gets three minutes. You don't have to use all the ten minutes.
No, I just have a general question, please, is not even in for or oppositionist question.
Then what you want to do is come to the mic, ma'am.
Yes, please.
Jane Tappy, forty-three-eighty Acorn Circles, Shreveport, seven-one-one oh seven. This is just a question of general knowledge for those of us that are here with the questions, concerns we have about UDC. Can you put this up there, please, sir?
Miss, second question for you, is this regarding this particular case?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And this is a very crude map because I made it myself for just speaking with these, this group here. This generally is, and I know you guys can't see it, this is the general Shreveport city limits here, see, you know, that's the light line. The dark line is the UDC guidelines, UDC perimeter. All right, so this is the general placement of the hundred and twenty acres, the gentleman's talking about annexing. Our question is this, and we've gotten no clear response. Let's say you annex this in, whether you do or whether you don't, if you annex this in, does that push this five-mile parameter of the UDC out?
I'm glad she asked that question so we could finally, for there.
That's provided us an opportunity to dispel those rumors. Mr. Clark, would you help us with this?
Yeah, I'm glad she asked that question so we could finally get the correct information out.
Thank you.
Basically, the Caddo Parish Commission would have to extend the MPC planning limits. By us annexing or recommending annexing property into the city, doesn't automatically extend the planning limits. So the answer to your question is no, that would not expand the MPC planning limits.
Well, it answers the first part. You would have to approve it, so what would keep you from approving it? You're all about the...
The Caddo Parish Commission would have to approve the extension of the line beyond where it is now.
Okay. Did the Caddo Parish extension, Caddo Parish Commission approve this UDC line?
It's not a UDC line. That, the Louisiana Legislature set up the, the planning limits, which established the, that area that you're speaking of.
Okay, I'm a little confused myself, I don't know about everybody else. When we read the definition of the UDC parameters, it's described to us as five miles out of the city limits. So this dark line here, going around the city limits here, will that be extended with time if someone comes back to the commission and says, we've built out here, the city has grown out now, and now we're out to here? Can we come to the commission and extend this UDC line on out to here? What would prevent you guys from saying, no, we do not want that, we do not want our outreach authority any further?
The Caddo Parish Commission is the only body that would be able to extend that line. They have not historically extended that line. That's why most of the planning limits as of today consist of properties no more than three miles beyond the city limits of the city of Shreveport. It is implied in the information that the planning limits will go up to five miles beyond the corporate limits of Shreveport. But that's not anything to do, Mr. Chairman, with the, the annexation of this property.
Well, it is, based on if you annexed, what would happen, and yes, sir, this is five miles from here to here. That's five miles. That's a straight line, that's five miles. If you turn it any other direction, you know, whether it's five miles or not, this is five miles. We just want to know, and we want to be among a matter of record, that, we're asking y'all, and y'all are all telling us as a commission, as a body, if the city of Shreveport extends and annexes and grows, you are not, as a commission, going to extend that line. Is that what y'all are hearing?
They're saying that the Caddo Commission, I think, would be the one that...
Would approve or disapprove?
So if the Caddo Commission do it, if they annex it.
Is that correct?
That is correct. It would be the Caddo Parish Commission, not the Metropolitan Planning Commission.
Caddo Parish Commission, which would be tomorrow, yes, not the Metropolitan, excuse me, Planning Commission. So that's where we are in that thought process.
All right.
Thank you.
Now, having said that, is there anyone else who could speak in opposition? Please come forward. We have a gentleman standing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, just a moment, please.
Okay, sir.
Just a second. Mr. Jean?
Yes, I just want to clarify, because there seems to be quite a bit of confusion around that. We have enabling legislation that states that we have a jurisdiction up to five miles beyond the city limits of Shreveport. However, so that's a potential jurisdiction. The actual jurisdiction that you see on the black line that we just pointed to is set by the Caddo Parish Commission. So while the potential jurisdiction would extend upon annexation, the actual planning limits would not extend without specific action, which is ordinance by the planning commission. I hope that clears that up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It sort of does, but it wouldn't hold up, it wouldn't hold up, sir. My name is John Harold, forty-twenty-nine Shepherd Roads, Shreveport, Louisiana. I live in this area. We've had these blow-and-go schemes come up before, we've shot them down. You're, you're talking about putting it right in the Cross Lake watershed, that's the biggest detriment to developing the Martin Luther King area. You drive through there, you see all the drains, ditches, and they all end up in Cross Lake. I am the president of Geological Drafting Consultants, Oil and Gas and Land Farm. I deal in this day in and day out. I've done well over a billion dollars' worth of mapping for the companies around this area. That's what they've invested in us. Now, I don't want to say y'all annex this and then it just moved the line, so to speak, again, and it just go to nothing, but we're having enough problems in that area without having vacant buildings and somebody walking away for checks. But we're having enough problems in that area without having vacant buildings and somebody walking away for check. So any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Harold? All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak in opposition? Please step forward. Give us your name and address.
My name is Bruce DeVeau, four oh three Irving Bluff Road, Shreveport, seven one one oh seven. If you're not familiar with it, that's just outside the city on the north side, off Old Morris Port Road. I'm here to speak in opposition of that annexation. First of all, where'd the young man go? The young man has a great idea, and I wish him ever success in the world. I don't know about the water issues that would just pre- that's not my area of expertise. I don't know anything about it, cannot address it. However, the things that I do know, the city of Shreveport has a crumbling infrastructure. And adding more infrastructure to try to maintain is not in the best interest of Shreveport. Yet, the Caddo Parish Commission elects to move the Metropolitan Planning Commission's boundary out even further. We're already expanding an overtax system to try to support infrastructure that cannot be supported. My suggestion is the young man build that. I think it'd be great. I traverse that area all the time, and I think it'd be a plus for that community. However, I think it'd be a plus for that community in Caddo Parish, not in the city of Shreveport. Questions?
Mr. DeVeau? Any questions for Mr. DeVeau? Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak in opposition? Anyone else care to speak in opposition? All right. Hearing none? Mr. Wood, you have an opportunity for rebuttal if you choose to make any comments.
The plans, again, this, this is going to take years for this, all of this to come to... To come to fruition because initially, we, I have a developer right now looking at a hundred and fifty unit apartment complex that they'd like to bring into the area, which would be somewhere in this area is what we're thinking right now. The, I understand some of the people having some of the opposition, but from what I understand, a development this size is basically required to come into the city for it to be annexed to the city. At least that's what I was told a number of years ago when I was looking at this. So again, and I appreciate the fact that we all are aware that that area could use and absolutely needs some sort of development like this. So no one seems to be in opposition to that. And bottom line, we're, we're here to do that. So, and all of the different things that they spoke about, I'm not really privy to. But as far as for our little piece of a hundred and twenty acres, we're, we're ready to, to go in there and start revitalizing that area, putting up some really beautiful and buildings and develop that whole area, put some parks in there, make it a beautiful area for the people in the Cooper Road area. And that's basically what I have to say.
Thank you very much. Board members, any comments at this time? All right. Hearing no comments, we will call for a vote. I'm sorry, we need a motion. It's January twenty-fourth. Can I get a motion, please? Either for in favor or against? Need, all right, discussion?
The staff is recommending approval because of the revitalization marking in the master plan.
That is correct.
So it's in an area that is positioned strategically that that could be a benefit for the neighborhood. Whether our elected officials, who are elected, choose to change the, the map and the boundaries is up to them. That has nothing to do with us. We are not elected, and we don't, we are not lawmakers, and we don't decide on, on boundaries. So I don't want that to fog the, the analysis of this application, which is just about whether or not this neighborhood is going to revitalize the area more effectively if it's in the city limits or not. I don't think that some anticipatory threat of expanding the five-mile radius should be considered. I don't think that's an appropriate consideration in this application.
But the consideration of the cost and the burden it puts to the city...
That is an appropriate discussion.
That is appropriate discussion and probably needs to be had more often. And honestly, I encourage our elected officials to kind of let us know and about their feelings and thoughts about annexing more into the city or not doing that. I've read many things together. We're going to get more training on that and more information on that coming up. But in my readings and my studies, I tend not to be, that's my personal opinion, not the board's, I tend not to want to do annexations. I'm learning not to do annexations into the city because of the burden, the cost, and, and our situation in our city and our finances.
Right, and I, y'all have read probably the same smart reports we've read about this, and it's a new issue for our board. We've not dealt with annexations until just recently. But I think our certified planners are more educated than we are on this, and they are recommending approval of this particular application against, against the general rule.
And I, you know, I tend to go through developments too, so I like to see more growth in the area too. But again, what is the, what is the...
The cost.
The cost to it, and it's not like they could not develop in the parish versus the city. It is a cost to them too. I do acknowledge that.
And Mr. Johnson is the commissioner of this?
This is Mr. Johnson's parish.
Has he weighed in on this? Is he present?
The, the city councilman from the district has recommended approval of the annexation in order to assist in the revitalization of a very depressed area. There's been very little to no development in the Martin Luther King area. Southern University is sitting there with no amenities, no additional services available to it. That pretty well prevents it in all likelihood from ever expanding or growing. It's pretty stagnated at, at the present point because it's isolated, and there really no- nothing around it. And that was the reason that the, the staff recommended that the possibility of revitalization and some investment in that area because, you know, possibly a long time ago, that area was unfairly annexed into the city limits, but it's been in the city limits for quite some time.
Say that again, is in the city limits?
It's in the city limits. I mean, the MLK area. That whole area was annexed into the city limits. And this is right on the, the fringes of that part of the city limits. It's not like we leapfrogging and going out into the parish and annexing property into the city. This is right on the boundaries.
And, and I think we've had a case before that was part of the property was on, in the city and another part that they wanted to annex in was right on the border of it too.
In the same district?
In the same district.
Yes.
So we're going to, obviously, we're going to get, it seems like we're going to get more and more of these. I guess as a board, we've got to decide how we're going to handle it.
You asked a question about the, the city council. The city council is in the process, same process, process that you're in.
Okay.
They're learning about the, the benefits and the negativity of, of annexation. The council generally, I attend all the meetings, on these issues, they're generally split on the, the vote in determining whether or not to annex. I think we will grow and become more educated and more knowledgeable of the benefits or the like of benefits, and like you're sharing today, the negative impacts on, on the infrastructure, the negative impacts on police protection, the negative impacts as a result of fire protection and so forth, and maintenance of streets, et cetera.
We're taxed on that, any, I mean, we...
Yeah, and, and we're looking at, we're looking at some other possibilities of, of developing fees for persons that are being annexed into the city limits. Impact fees that would, will support the impact of bringing these properties within the city limits.
But see, on a situation like this, I'm not even sure we're in a position to assess on the fly right now what that impact would be. I mean, it seems like, uh...
There's got to be...
It's one, it's one thing if we're going ten miles out, but if we're going... Oh, if we're going...
Hello? Well, it's, it's another thing if we're going a few miles one way or the other. I mean, you know, hundreds of yards even. And so that's kind of where I'm hung up on this one. Kind of like I was on the one that I voted in favor of before, which is what, just a little bit east of this?
Yes. I mean, it's the same, it's the same situation.
Principle.
The same principle.
There's costs of, there's financial costs of police protection, and then there's also the cost of not having it. And if it's right on the edge of, of an area that might need be higher crime and needed.
But there's parish as protection.
Right, but I, but I don't know that that's...
Quantified.
Right, right. I just don't, I first, I do feel uneducated on this, which is why I would say staff...
There's got to be a method to just see what that cost is.
Is it possible, is it possible for us to defer this?
We just deferred him, and...
Last time.
But my problem is, I, I think not to pretermine what you're getting ready to say, but that's my, my issue with it is I try not to, in general, approach these matters from a pure the black or white sort of standpoint. It's not either, either or. It's not a hundred percent one direction, a hundred percent the other, but I just don't feel like we know. And so I'm not really necessarily inclined to say I'm against all annexation. But to Leah's point, I do understand that, and to the gentleman's point on the front row about the, the aging and crumbling infrastructure that we're experiencing. So I get all of that, but the, the potential for developing some growth out there is, I think we can all agree, necessary.
It's not going to be...
And just to confirm, is our decision a recommendation, like a zoning decision to this commissioner?
It's a recommendation. The city council will make the final determination.
So will this go to the city council though or the commission?
The city council.
If we annex...
It's been annexed into the city limits of Shreveport.
Right, they have to make the decision.
So if we, if we were not to annex it, would he go to the city council, I mean, to the, to his commissioner, to the commission?
It would not have to be appealed. The city council could still annex the property, and you're just recommending.
So the, so Mr. Johnson, the commissioner, who's, who's the Caddo, who's the elected Caddo commissioner of this part of the parish?
Yes.
He hasn't, he's not going to be seeing this, and he's not here today objecting.
No.
But it's the city council.
It's the city council that's having no impact on the parish and Caddo.
Not the commission, the council.
He wouldn't have an objection, yeah.
And you think Mr. Bradford's in favor of this?
Bradford has said that he's in favor.
I wish he was here.
He's publicly stated that he's in favor of the possibility of what this development can bring to the MLK, MLK area.
Okay, so our motion today again is just a recommendation, it's not a final decision.
Right.
It, it's just a recommendation. Ms. Bessie?
I'll just go say go to the city council.
All right, board members, we all understand this is a recommendation that will go to the city council, as they always say. Yes. Want to make sure we all understand. Any other comments?
I have one.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, I do. My comment is that we're talking about annexation. And I guess I am one that's saying, my answer, the guy's presentation, it was very, very good. But what I see, we can't even take care of the problems we have in the city. And then we, yes. I have a problem with that. And I know at the last meeting, Mr. Bradford, he was here, and I know what side he was on. But I know the problems, and I mean, we have some problems in this city that we're not taking care of. So you can know the way I'm going to vote, Paul. That's all I have to say.
All right. Anybody else have any comments? Board members? All set, all done? Can we get a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
They have a motion and a second. A call for the vote, all those in favor, please vote.
As I suspected.
I know, I just am so torn, I just want you to know that.
All right.
I would have made another vote.
The motion passes? Thank you very much, board members.
I voted last time, yes.
We'll call now for case number nineteen dash four seven six dash C. UDC amendment.
Could I ask Mr. Bailey if he would introduce those to you very quickly?
Would you care to present this?
Very quickly, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are eight COTEX amendments before you today. These amendments are only for the Shreveport UDC. There are no COTEX amendments for the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code. To make it brief, amendments one through six set requirements for sidewalks, walkability, and pedestrian safety. The MPC staff worked with city engineering on these amendments. The city engineer has reviewed and agreed with these proposed changes. Amendment seven is a repeal and replace of Article twenty annexations. This amendment actually went before you in December. However, due to a technicality, you failed to recommend the most up-to-date draft. This amendment adds the correct language, which addresses any discrepancies between the two drafts. And this amendment for annexations is just procedural. It just shows how you, as a board, actually recommend annexations, enclosure, and abandonments. Amendment eight removes the language in Article twenty-two wireless telecommunications that says that stealth facilities are permitted in all districts, subject to approval of a WTFP by the executive director. Stealth towers require a special use permit. This amendment fixes that discrepancy. Only stealth antennas attached to existing structures would be able to be administratively approved. And those are the only eight amendments. I can answer any questions.
So you feel like we're kind of about to get it kind of lined out in this particular category that you just enumerated?
Yes.
Great. Any comments from board members? Can I get a motion?
You...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, you'll need to see if there's any...
Any.
In favor or opposition.
Is there anyone here that would care to speak in favor of this revision of the articles that have just been presented? Anyone care to speak in favor? Anyone care to speak in opposition to these articles that have been revised and presented? Anyone care to speak in opposition? All right, hearing none? Then I call for the vote. Board members?
Motion.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
You're getting your sea legs back.
That's okay, we'll make it, we'll make it. We have a motion by... Ms. Bessie's second by Mr. Chris. All those in favor, please vote. All right. The motion's... All right, the motion's approved. Thank you so much. All right, I believe we're down to old business. Committee chair reports. Are there any committee chair reports at all, other than, as it relates to, I think we, we maybe one, we set aside the executive committee that's already been appointed. And then we'll manage to get the others put together by the February meeting, if that pleases the board.
Sure.
Question.
All right, now we're down to new business. Under that, we have research and downzone property extension discussion.
In reference to research, Mr. Chair, very briefly, if you noticed on the amendments, historically, when we amended the City Unified Development Code, we also submitted recommendations to amend the Parish Unified Development Code. We've listened to citizens, we've listened to the commission, we've listened very carefully. Our ears have not been closed. And we have embarked on doing some extensive research after meeting with the commissioners of the rural district. We are interested in doing some involved research on comparing the ability to develop a unified development code specifically for the citizens in Caddo Parish. It would be different from the current Unified Development Code. We may repeal and replace many issues that now exist in the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code. But that's the most important research that we're gonna be doing and that we are doing is evaluating what we have. We may have not gotten the total involvement from the citizens outside the city limits. They may have different ideas. That may be why it took, has taken so long to get amendments done by the Caddo Parish Commission. It just may be at a point where we have to look, stop, and start over to better serve all the citizens of Caddo Parish and the city of Shreveport.
We appreciate that. Thank you, sir. All right. Downzone property extension discussion. I believe we invited the staff to put that on the agenda. Would someone, would you care to refresh our memory as to what we're talking about?
If I'm not mistaken, we extended the policy of allowing persons to come in and request the return of their zoning that had been downzoned as a matter of the map changes. And that period had extended and staff requested that you extend it to August twenty twenty and December twenty twenty. August twenty twenty in the city, December twenty twenty in the parish. And we found that we are getting very few to no additional applications, inquiries concerning these downzoning adjustments. So by your request, this could be your saying that it ends as of today.
Any comments from board members? Do we all understand, we had this open for how long now? Two years?
Two or three years.
Almost three years. We're into the third year. Was something that we really didn't have to do.
It was something that was not required by law. It was a courtesy that you extended to citizens both in the city and in the parish. It's important that people understand that this is just the map, when the UDC was adopted, the maps were changed. And because the maps were changed, some properties that were zoned, I use the example industrial, were changed to open space. And property owners had the ability to come back in as a result of your policy and to say, in order to market my property, it would be much more marketable if it remained industrial. So you had recommended the restoration or return of that zoning, and you had done it without fee. It does not take away the ability for anybody to resolve property. All that happens if you are inclined to do this, take this action, would be it would go through the normal rezoning process. That's the only changes.
We were never notified.
At a cost. It's at a cost.
Ladies and gentlemen, now if you have something to say, we're gonna give you open mic time. We've respected your presence. We'd love for you to do that for us. All right. At this time, do we have any comments from the public? Do you have a spokesperson?
Concerning Mr. Clark's current statement, Jane Tappy, forty-three eighty, Acorn Circle, Shreveport seven eleven oh seven. This was already on my list, and then Mr. Clark brought it up. Excuse my scribble here, but can you put that on there, please, sir? All right. I'm a realtor. I listed this particular property two-plus years ago, had it almost three years. At that time, I'm gonna have to get close so I can read it, so I hope you can still hear me. It was zoned, um, the orange portion was zoned R three E as an extended use district to permit a daycare. However, extended use districts no longer exist under the UDC. You will need to apply to rezone the property for commercial use. The UDC equivalent to this property would be R three for the southerly portion, which was residential, and C two for the part that the daycare was on. Okay. If I would not have had a buyer come to me and say, ooh, I'd like to buy that property. I said, great, bring us an offer. And you know what? It's already zoned commercial. Good for you. Let me send you the maps. I pull up the maps. It's not, it's no longer zoned commercial. This seller is only an example of one person that was not notified that their zoning changed. Yes, we have the opportunity till August to do this at no charge. Have you contacted every person that zoning was changed and said, your zoning has changed? Some people it won't affect, obviously. This person right here, old people, they don't have money. They just want me to sell their property. I have a buyer. But if we would not have accidentally got a potential buyer right now, I would've sat there and marketed the property as a commercial property, and I would've been wrong because I would've passed out wrong information. So I totally disagree with Mr. Clark's approach of it's been out there a long time. Once you send out letters to everybody that had their zoning changed, then set a time limit on if you want to. But you cannot, in good faith, put something at a library meeting or put it in the newspaper and say, we told everybody. That is not gonna fly. Sorry, that's all mine.
And I will say one more, one more, Mr. Chair, that this is a policy that you all established. You have every right to change that policy. And all we're saying, I'm not recommending that. I'm sharing with you because you asked that it be placed on the agenda for discussion, that if you're so inclined to change that policy, that you change it, or don't.
What I'd like to do at this particular time, please just a moment, sir.
Okay.
What I'd like to do at this time, perhaps maybe, uh, we could entertain a motion to defer and continue this discussion at another time, so that we can take a serious look at methods of communicating. We did the best that we knew how to do some twenty-four months ago, but here again, there are some opportunities for doing a better job of making this happen. And if the board is amicable to that, then I would invite some discussion at this point.
All due respect, I think, uh, I've said before, when I first became aware that the UDC was gonna be implemented, I was not involved in planning at all. I didn't represent clients who were involved in planning issues, but it was all over the newspaper. It was all over the news. I don't know exactly how you can, and I don't mean this in any way to disrespect my line of the little to point, but you can't be in everybody, I don't see how we can knock on everybody's door, and how we can make a personal phone call to everyone. The information is available, just kinda like, you know, people always on Facebook and the internet. I mean, the information is out there, and I don't think it was hidden from anybody. And so the problem I have, uh, sitting in this chair and on this body, is we're charged with trying to implement something that has been put in the public. It was massive discussion. And like I said, I wasn't involved in planning at all, and I attended two separate meetings and sat for hours and listened because I understood from a prefatory standpoint that this was gonna be a sea change in the way zoning issues and planning was done in this area. It's gonna be a complete about-face in many respects from the way it had been done for decades. And so I knew that this was gonna, uh, my friend is an architect. I know this is gonna change the way you all did business. It's gonna change the way realtors did business. It's gonna change the way people who own property did business. And so I paid attention. And so here we are now, and I'm on the other side of this dice, and now we're making these decisions. And I think that as we continue to get years and years removed from when the legislation was passed, I think we need to close the door on that. And I understand that there's gonna be fees associated with it, but we can't ad nauseam continue to move forward without buckling down and making the tough decisions. No developer wants any strict policies on their ability to develop a property. No seller wants any regulations on their properties. But as we sit here, these things have been passed. They've been approved by the governing bodies, and it is now our job to implement these changes. And as difficult as it may be, I think we need to go ahead and take the Band-Aid off and snatch it off. And it's been, I've been on this body for over two years, and I think we've had this conversation. And so if we're gonna take a vote on it, my recommendation is gonna be now's the time. Because tomorrow, they'll say, well, I think we've already heard that there's some people who wanna get rid of the UDC's application in the five-mile radius out into the parish. Well, I mean, that's part of our problem in this area. We don't find something and stick to it and adhere to it and move forward. We can't keep standing, or sitting straight at the fence. And so I think we need to move forward, Mr. Chair.
Do you have the motion with that comment, mister?
My motion, unless there's any additional discussion, my motion would be that we've allowed the extension of this policy to go on for quite some time. Now, I think you said we're coming up on three years?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I don't see what else we could do at this point to go out, and again, no disrespect, Mr. Chair, but I don't see that we could go out and give them any more notice than we've given. And so my recommendation would be that we now end that courtesy that we've had going on for some quite a period of time.
We have a motion by Mr. Curtis and a second by Ms. DeMar Joe. All in favor, call for the vote.
We have more comments, excuse us.
This is done, public here.
Yeah, we're done. Yes, we are done.
No, you're not. That's not right.
That's a real smart ass.
That ain't right.
That's not right.
The gentleman just said that he had a friend that was an architect, so he knew about it. I don't have a friend that's an architect.
No, no. This was put out for the city of Shreveport, not the parish.
Not for the parish.
We did not know that it was for the parish too. Y'all brought these meetings to the city. And I would not talk out of turn, but I'm being told that we can't talk on this now.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen.
And to not speak out of turn, for this gentleman to say this was a major, complete about-face from the way we used to do things, well, then shouldn't it have been approached with a major, let's tell everybody about it?
There was.
No, it was not.
No, it was not.
If I, we, no, there was in the city. There was. I've done research. There was a lot, you know, pushed in the city. Y'all went to neighborhood associations and things. Nothing was brought to outside the city limits. We did not know anything. When we hear in the city of Shreveport, we're thinking in the city, not outside on our park.
I think that the commissioners, I think the commissioners had to, the commissioners had to approve it. Is that right? You know, so.
And we will be there tomorrow.
Being blonde is smug being blonde. You're wrong about this.
It's an extreme injustice being done. We need more people to speak. A lot of people came to speak. We need to at least let us hear a comment and don't just really take advantage of us.
We want an opportunity to speak with y'all and let you know. We are the people, by the way. Government is of the people, fine people, poor people, and we are the people.
Correct.
Not y'all, not this case.
And, 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 Mr. Chair, if I may, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I think that you are exactly right. But you have to allow the correct forum for us to have these discussions. We're not closing ears to anything you're saying.
I think that's what you're saying.
I just said, we're not closing, we're not closing. If y'all would ever, if y'all would ever listen, just we'll listen just one time.
We listen to what you say.
Just one time. We're not closing ears to the things that you're saying. This is not the correct forum for what you're asking for. We are, as I shared with you, we have a real desire, a sincere desire. And it will be proven to come out to your neighborhoods and sit down and talk with you and listen to every concern you have and discuss the possibilities of doing things and make recommendations as appropriate to the things that your concerns are. I, if you'll just let me get through, please, sir. I shared with the MPC staff that I am not totally sure that we did the best possible job that we could've done in communicating with the citizens outside the city limits of Shreveport. And that that is going to be a commitment that I am making to the Caddo Parish Commission and the citizens outside the city limits of Shreveport to communicate with you because we do wanna hear what your ideas are, what your thoughts. You're very important. You're very necessary, and you're absolutely right. You are the people. So we will be coming, but I hope that you will receive us when we do come, and it will not be.
We're not, it's like a snatch of.
We're not making a living on it, it's in a little bit, a little bit.
We will come and listen to you, but we hope that you will receive us and have ideas. We don't want, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't have anything to do with your pocketbooks. Have ideas?
When you see values my land, you do have my pocketbook.
That's right.
Y'all are wrong.
There's nothing we're gonna be able to accomplish today.
Y'all live outside the city limits.
Listen, y'all, listen. They're trying to tell us there's a way to do this. Mr. Andrews, may I touch the.
Please.
Well, my name is Laura Newbert, and I am one of the people that was impacted by this rezoning. I've worked with Mr. Jean, opened my business in Shreveport. I was one of the first business owners, unfortunately, that came before the city of Shreveport under the UDC. And to say it was pure hell to get through this process would be an understatement. Mr. Jean and I worked many hours, I would say, many visits. When we rolled up plans, I would come back to this group, and I would present what was asked of me. And then I would be told, well, we changed this, we're under this new way of doing business. We need other things. It took me from December the ninth through May of the next year to get my plans approved because of what's required under the new UDC. Then, once I was able to finally get through the process, and it took us to about September of that next year, to get our office built and get a CO, which I worked with Mr. Clark on, he was in the field at the time, only to come through this process. So I was knowledgeable, as a general contractor in this area, that there were changes, that permits, the permit office, there were changes with the permits that the parish, when you did business in the parish, the city of Shreveport would have to come to the job site and do the inspection. So I realized there were some changes there. However, as a resident in North Shreveport that lives in this five-mile zone, after twenty-seven years in the same place, I was not knowledgeable of any of these things that took place. So I inquired, when I did find out that I had been rezoned, how did this happen? I called, called your office. How did this happen? And I was told, well, as long as we do fourteen lots or more by state law, we don't have to send out notices to the individual landowners. Okay? Now, as someone that sits on this side of the podium, that pays taxes, law-abiding, built my office in Shreveport, so I live in Caddo, but I built in the city limits of Shreveport, I try to support my community. You would not be hearing these people's anger. You would not be hearing these people's anger if they weren't being ticketed for lumens, being projected over their property line to other people, that they've been ticketed for RVs that have been sitting on their land for years that they now have to pay fines for. We are worried as a group of people, hear this, please, hear this, that we don't have due process and what happens with us once these tickets are issued and once we have to come and before committee to ask for these tickets and things to be undone. So please understand this anger that you feel here is because we are angry with the things that have happened to our property without our consent and knowledge. And we're just simply asking for y'all to understand that.
And, and, and I understand that, what I'm getting at and what I tried to say earlier is the commission and the city council approve these, this, this change. We are using what's been approved by those two bodies.
We understand that, but understand that we are trying to get to the bottom of how do we undo what we feel is damage to us as people outside the city limits. That's all we're asking for here, and y'all are a body that we are standing before. Peers, ex-co-workers, architects, people that represent the good of this city and the good of this community. And we're saying, hear us, we have a concern about what is happening to us, okay? Please don't shut us out, we're just asking to be listened to.
And keep, keep in mind, y'all are half of the side of the coin that we hear at meetings. We, we hear the half who come here complaining that their neighbors are violating.
Absolutely.
So we're, y'all are one half, we hear the other half as well.
You hear this in the parish?
We hear the complaints from people who don't want abandoned RVs on their, within their line of sight. So I'm just, for example, um, but we, so we're hearing the, the other side as well. So we balance all of this, y'all are not the only voice, you have, there is a competing voice from the parish.
Understood that, and I would like to express to this group of folks here, the committee, all the people here. I was zoned to R1A, I have fifteen acres of land, um, and I, you can spit outside my driveway and it's outside the MPC, so I'm on that outside edge. I had been rezoned to RE, I didn't know what that was, I had to call and inquire about that. So now, because of the zoning I have, double-wide manufactured homes are no longer allowed where I live. Now, I can tell you that I passed one, a single wide on the right side of my driveway going out. There's one down from that, another one down from that, one across the street, another one down from that, but yet.
Have you called to complain, if there's not a complaint, it's probably not.
I don't, I don't, I don't wanna complain, I want these people to live in peace and harmony, I've been there for twenty-seven years. What I'm saying is this, what I'm saying is this, the people across the street are not in the zone, okay? I see that, y'all have no jurisdiction over that. My neighbors, however, are. So you're going to implement the rules on one side of the street and not the other, how does that make sense?
Well, we're, we, we have to, the, the zoning, people have to because the, the commission and the city will pass the ordinances. So they have an ob, the, the inspectors and all that have an obligation to uphold the law, the ordinances.
Have you been down Greenwood Road lately? I, 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 I live every day at fifty-five oh five.
I don't disagree with you, ma'am, I really don't, and I do.
But I'm just saying to you, as someone, y'all please, as someone that.
We're not the enemy.
I know you're not, and we understand that, we, we are reaching out to you as a group of people to say we understand, we want you to hear our voice. What concerns me as a citizen of Shreveport, I spent my life savings in a building at fifty-five oh five Greenwood Road, and you can go two miles that way, and someone was just recently on the news asking why there was no enforcement for all the abandoned vehicles and cars. So it's hard for me to swallow that as someone that lives outside the city while tickets are being written in the rural areas when the city itself has so many problems like Ms. Smith said. Why, why, we feel picked on, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, and I understand, and I feel for you, and I think there's a lot of, they've added staff to enforcement and all that. I think there's a lot of work to be done.
And there is a lot of enforcement going on.
And there is enforcement being gone in the city too. Um, and I think a lot of those fines were waived and.
And all of those fines were suspended because the Caddo Parish Commission asked us to, to hold those violations until such time as we could study more in depthly.
Right.
The uses and the events that are occurring out in the parish, and that's, I was trying to share with these citizens that we are looking at, uh, the, the situations that are out in the parish. We are not going through with the fines, Mr. George, uh, has been, had, we've had that conversation. Uh, the inspectors are not out in the parish writing tickets or submitting letters of violation anymore until at such time that we can sit down, evaluate, and, and sit down with you and explain and come up with, uh, ordinances that work for the persons outside the city limits.
And, and I will tell you generally to this body, one of the major concerns of things that I've heard people say, and I'm just a citizen, but I do listen, and I'm a business owner, is that the grandfather clause in what's happening with this UDC, there seems to be a big fear that when the first natural disaster hits this area and somebody's roof is peeled off of their home or they have to come to a, to get a permit from, to this, to the city for a permit for some reason, that there's going to be a requirement that everything that they're not in compliance with under this UDC be corrected. Now, is that misinformation or is that correct?
Mr. Chair, would you like?
Yes, sir, please.
In, in the cases of natural disaster, when it's at no fault of the, of the homeowner.
Can't hear you.
Can, can you hear me? Uh, so when there's no fault of the homeowner, there's some kind of disaster of some sort, no, it does not automatically trigger all compliance. There, there is a, there's a section of the code, it's on non-conformities, that talks about this. And, um, so basically, uh, there are a set of triggers that would cons, do compliance, and it depends on what kind of non-conformity it is.
Can you give us an example of that?
Uh, yes, well, uh, let, let's say that you added on to your business and you added on more than twenty-five percent to your business. Then you would have to meet all of the, of the requirements as regards to the, uh, site elements. But if you were less than that, or, you know, then you would not have to. So, so as a homeowner, uh, there, there, you know, when you began to do some, some, you wanna completely demolish what you're doing and you wanna put on an entire new home, yes. I mean, those are the kinds of situations, but it, but it was demolished because of a natural disaster, no. Uh, we've taken incideration that, that that could be rebuilt the way it was before. So all of that's in the code now, we would be glad to explain that in more detail. Um, and, and of course, this is the kinds of things that we wanna make sure we can clear up and make sure that we can, any, any misunderstandings of the, codes are very complex and very difficult to read. And, 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 you know, a lot of times that we do that because of the, of legal, to withstand legal muster, it's, it's, it's written that way. We'd be glad to help interpret as much as we can, explain all the issues.
Okay, I would just say in closing, the showmen would like to speak, but I would just say in closing, please keep in mind that we are a group of people, we do invest in this community. I felt so sad for this other man that was over here trying to do something good for the Cooper Road area. I pass that every day, that is my corridor that I travel, and he got caught in, in, in this whole UDC thing. Uh, and I told him I would love to see his development, I'd love to help him with it as a general contractor.
But you see that point, right? So we, we, all of us up here, these people, and those people get paid to be up here. The rest of us are volunteers, we're all volunteers trying to make this area a better area.
And we appreciate that, and we do.
But with respect to the gentleman in Cooper Road, right? The issue we grapple with there is do we extend city services to allow the pro, the, to allow the, the, the development that you'd like to see?
Absolutely.
And those are tough, those are tough calls, and we're not gonna make a lot of people happy.
I, I, I get that.
But every one of us up here is concerned about making this area a better area, or I guarantee you, we wouldn't be here at five o'clock on, on a Wednesday evening.
So I just ask that you guys just keep that in mind, that we are people too, we are homeowners, we are investors. And just remember that when we come to you and we spend our time, 'cause I'm out of my office today for this, I've been here for hours, that we wanna be heard, we don't wanna be shut out, okay? And so that's all we're asking.
We are offering the forum for that.
Yep, okay, so come on.
Just a moment, just a moment.
I just, I just.
Let's talk a little bit about the forum that we're potentially offering, please.
We are in the process of developing a forum where we will have public meetings outside the, the city limits in the areas of your communities, where we will bring our entire staff out to sit down and, uh, interpret the ordinance, answer all the questions that you have, talk about the things that you do not like, make recommendations to address the things that you're concerned about. As I've said fifty times, we are not locking you out, we are not deaf to what you're saying. Uh, it, it will take a little time, as you know, this was a process that happened and you were not aware of this process until you received some letters advising you that you were in violation of, of the Unified Development Code. We are still coming to you, we're working through your parish commissioner, those are the person that you elected. We are working through them to come and sit down with you and review and examine everything that you have to say. The only thing we were saying is that it is not the best opportunity for you to get the information that you need at this meeting. We want to come where, to your place and sit down with you and, and the only discussion that we have, instead of staying down here three hours, listening to everything else, the only discussion we will have will be your issues. That's all we're asking for.
Uh, I don't really know the rules of this court, do the people have a right to speak?
Yes, you've been waiting a long time, and I want to give you our undivided attention. So except.
We will get in touch.
I know, but this guy.
We will get in touch with you in your neighborhood, wherever that is, through your parish commissioner and sit down with you and share everything you wanna share, whoever your parish commissioner is.
Mr. Clark.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you please, I know you're saying that you all, but that parish commissioner, he is an elected official. He needs to be there with you all.
And, and what I advise them, Mrs. Smith, is that.
Mr. Johnson.
The, Mr. Johnson may not be the only parish commissioner that's represented, and the inauguration for parish commissioners will be Monday. And when they are in office, we will be reaching out through them to come and meet with you.
That's who need to be there.
You need to talk to your commissioners.
That's it, commissioners.
And they are the ones, as you well know, that from the recommendation of this body, actually inite laws.
Right.
Yeah.
So we, 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 we're, we're hopeful that this is a very productive process because it's apparent that the past product was not as effective as it should've been.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Clark. Sir, would you state your name?
My name's Alonzo Sanders, I'm here about ten nineteen Pickett Street, and it's a rezoning, I understand what you were saying about all the tickets.
What you want to talk about is case number nineteen, that.
No, no, I don't, that case is going to court already, I'm here to oppose any amendments to the UDC for future applicants not to be able to rezone their land, that's what I'm here for. I actually asked the judge to have a state order for the city council and the MPC not to be able to change any amendments anymore, which it was, it's a, a trial supposed to be happening on February tenth, which I'll basically be subpoenaing certain, uh, MPC members and city councils for that. But what I would like to ask is that the just MPC board members, uh, realize what's going on within the community. Um, speaking about newspapers and articles and it's two, two, twenty-twenty, most people are on the internet. I haven't seen a newspaper probably in ten years, to be honest with you. So we have here people who haven't heard about the change. I have over eleven people in my specific area, I've reached out to five of them already. I've went to the MPC and got them applications, they will be bringing their applications in next week. I'm trying to reach out to the other six, this is the Pickett Street area I'm speaking about, so all of them can come and, um, rezone their land because surprisingly, none of them have heard about the rezoning as well and their land being downzoned. So we have a problem here with a lot of the citizens in Shreveport who are unaware of what's going on, not only property changes, but people like me who plan to build businesses in this city and do certain things for the people of the community, but I'm being disallowed to because I'm being told I need to build a house. And I bought that land when it was commercial, it should still be commercial. Uh, I didn't have to go through this process to get it downzoned. I don't feel like I should have to go through this process to get it rezoned, but here I am. Um, I do not wanna continue to go to court, to be honest with you. Um, it's, it's, it's just a big situation that I, I wish I wasn't in. And, um, I'm hoping that, once again, the just members of the MPC will make a just decision instead of doing this, and as for all the people behind me, I've actually committed to paying for lawyers for people who plan on going to court. Um, I got a campaign right now going on that, um, I'm gonna be putting up twenty billboards, ordering ten thousand flyers each and every month for anybody who is unjust and corrupt in the system who are basically taking advantage of the community, all right?
You've moved away from the UDC subject.
Yeah, no, no, this is still about the UDC.
Just a moment, sir. I'm gonna invite the rest of you gentlemen to have a seat because security has come in and advised us that that is the proper thing to do, if you don't mind.
Am I missing something? I wanna talk three minutes.
Come talk about the rezoning, you talking about the rezoning, come on and talk, sir.
Uh, excuse me, you, you're not the one calling people to.
Oh, hey, if you wanna come get my spot, I'll sit down.
Well, have you finished because your time is up?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody who need a lawyer, y'all paying for it.
All right, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board, it appears that where we are at this moment in reference to this subject, Mr. Clark has stated a plan that we can use in an effort to make those present and anyone not here more aware of what we're trying to accomplish and getting to in this business of changing with the UDC. A few minutes ago, I recommended that we table this discussion to give them a chance upstairs to put together a plan that will be put together to notify you and others about this situation so that we can, as Mr. Curtis said, bring it to closure. If we keep kicking the can down the road, we need your help to tell us how to get in touch with people, how to get them to the meetings, someone says all the meetings were held in the city. I know a little bit better than that because I went to a meeting in Greenwood. So all I'm saying is, we can try it again, try to do a little bit better job, but you gotta work with us and help us to understand how we can help you. We had a motion and we're gonna rescind that motion. All right, and we're gonna table this particular subject, uh, circle.
I'll make, I'll make a substitute motion to defer and delay for thirty days.
Thank you, Mr. Carvin, do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Is this the, uh, downzoning?
Yeah, yeah, this is on the downzoning.
Just so we'll know exactly where we are.
All right. All of us in favor, please vote yes. All right. Thank you very much, this motion.
Mr. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In that thirty-day time, can there be some type of forum that they could come to and express their?
That's what he's planning.
I understand that, I understand that, I'm just saying it so everybody can hear it, okay? So, uh, Mr. Clark, I guess we can get the names of the people that wanna talk at that forum, can know when it is.
Talking about the, uh, the downzoning.
Right.
Well, that.
And then after they, we meet with the commissioners, then we will set up the, uh, forum and the meetings to meet with the people in the districts. We're going all over, there are six rural commissioners, we wanna go to all six rural districts and meet with the citizens of those districts.
And once again, thank you, Mr. Clark, it's very important that commissioners be there. And here again, we are recommending body, the decision, the final decision is made by Caddo Parish Commissioners that are elected. And that's the thing we need everybody to understand. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, very much. Uh, we'll move on to item sixteen, other matters to be reviewed by the commission. Do you have a director's report at all?
Just, just real briefly, Mr. Chairman, if you haven't forgotten, uh, the, the retreat will be Friday from nine to twelve, uh, at Samstown. Uh, we will get a chance to explore some educational moments for more in-depth education to the board in reference to building strong towns and building strong communities. Uh, we encourage each one of you to be there, we've been planning retreats for. Uh, we encourage each one of you to be there, we've been planning retreats for a couple of years, and we finally got an opportunity to present such an opportunity to you. All right. And that's, and that's all I have, I, I, I just would, uh, be remiss if I didn't extend, uh, condolences on behalf of the MPC staff to Mr. Windsor Andrews, uh, due to the death of his father. Our prayers are with you, and our arms around, wrapped around you, we pray Godspeed in you in addressing, and God, through this dilemma. Amen. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I think, uh, board members, we're at the point on resolution approving training hours for Mr. Curtis Joseph, Mr. Mauricio Roffa, and Mr. Chris Elbersen.
Thank y'all for, for pre-seding.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Wait a minute, I've got my three minutes.
Oh, that's hard.
You can come back right off. Louis can't open meetings off, and I can have three minutes. You guys are saying, no, you can't, you gotta go someplace else.
Give it to him.
I'll make a motion. Second motion.
We second motions, we give you your three minutes, or, or-
Thank you, thank you, thank you. My name's Bruce DeVille, four three Irving Bluff, Shreveport seven one one oh seven. I am not trying to be an argumentative person, I want to propose two things, and I'm gonna try to go under my three minutes by a significant amount. One, I want to challenge you, I do not think the commission did a good job in notifying everybody, if you had, this would be empty, you guys would be home having dinner, is that correct?
We, I think we've, we've said that we could've done a better, the staff and us could do a better job.
Okay. Secondly, you've seen a lot of commercial stuff, and, and that gets real complicated that's outside of my area, personal, private, residential. I have looked at the code. I have a home, a modest home, I'm retired, hundred and fifty thousand, maybe on a good day, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home. I have projected out my retirement to come under compliance with that code, I have got to pull fifty to seventy thousand dollars out of the thin air that I do not have, or you will take my home away from me. Now, you can say, no, we're not gonna do that, I'm talking about the government in the end. And you say, no, but it's all there in the code, it's your code, it's not mine.
It's actually the, it's actually the, it's, the commission is the one that approved the code, we were the recommending body.
You're the one that enforces it.
Because the commission and the city says we have to enforce it.
I've heard, I've sat here and listened to you guys approve.
Recommend.
We recommend.
To the, to the council or the commission, depending on the location of the property.
And we hear you, and we're gonna hear you more.
The officers that are coming out and writing citations are claiming to be from the Metropolitan-
Right, they're following the law.
Is that true or false?
That's true, but they're following the law, but you gotta remember what Mr. Clark just said a few minutes ago, all of those citations that were written are going to be taken off the books for the time being, so that we can figure out a better way of helping people understand some of the changes that need to be made to enforce those ordinances. So, you don't have a thing waiting for you now.
Thank you, I appreciate your time, I would like to add two things, my condolences, sir. And, secondly, I heard a prayer, and I heard a pledge at the opening of this event, and I am so proud that you guys have taken steps to do that.
Thank you.
I'm not the bad guy, I just want to be left alone.
Thank you so much. All right, board members, we've had a public comment section already inadvertently on my error. Um, we are down to board members' comments, anyone care to make any comments? There's a resolution here. A resolution? Yes, that's what I called for, just prior to that comment, when we opened the gate for it. Um, I need a motion on the resolution for these guys to go get trained.
So, move.
They've been trained, it's just, just as, this is to be the official, official acknowledgement that this meets those requirements in the law. Yeah.
I need to know, I asked my ex-wife, she knows everything.
Yeah, just to prove the resolution, this would allow, this, what you're, you're doing is basically affirming that the training that they received meets the requirements for state law.
Do we have a motion?
I motion to approve.
Ms. Cooper, all in favor, please, vote please. Do I abstain, do we abstain on that? If you do, you have to write a letter, you don't.
Well, you can say, you can confirm that you've got your training.
I went, and I learned.
You're resolving.
Yeah, motion's approved, thank you. Any other comments?
I'm sorry for the cude, then.
Well, then, you can take a motion if I could get one.
I motion to, to-
Second.
A turn, a turn. Couldn't think of the word.
We done?